From you guys. I'll just-
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll roll through this year. Patrick, you rolling yet?
Yep, good to go.
Alrighty, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I second that.
You can give me the motion, or you don't have to.
I make a motion to, to approve the agenda for this afternoon.
We'll second that motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing now was in favor.
Aye.
Aye, nobody opposed. Amy Peterson, Auditor and Commissioner of Elections, Katie Dodge, Election Assi- Assistant. Wait, what about?
Oh, that's-
3024 Election Campus. Thank you.
Let me just- pictures?
Yeah.
Well, there's a, there's a longer form. They're on the long sheet.
What do you have for us, Katie?
Alright, we're just gonna be doing a lot of signing of the Abstract of Votes, election summaries, and then some letter certificates.
Yay, this is so fun!
I got them. The first one's, that's the President. Go on, your sign is President. And this copy is for- That's the Abstract of Votes for the Race of President.
Oh, I was gonna say.
And this first copy is for the election file. Alright, that's for U.S. Representative District Four.
Got these back?
Yeah. Alright. State Senator District Eight. State Representative District- Katie, what happened to the Health Department?
Yes?
Supreme Court Justice.
You don't like it, for any of those stupid judges, because they don't have-
Part of this field, you don't-
Do any campaign, you don't even know what they look like.
Second Part of Field Judge. Second Part of Field Judge. Fourth Part of Field Judge. District Four Judge. Second District Four Judge. District Four Associate Judge.
So Richard Comby, but I have him coming to sign all these.
Yeah, he's on tomorrow. Constitutional Amendment One. I only need two signatures to pass it off, but I like to have all three if I can get them.
You're right.
Constitutional Amendment Two.
He's still grabbing his thing, or taking it out.
Alright, uh, that's for Supervisors. County Auditor. County Sheriff. County Attorney, Chief of Police, Attorney.
Any way to find out the write-ins on this here?
Um, I have them. It was all under the threshold, um, to declare any names, so I didn't even look at them. Um, so they have to meet a 5% total vote.
Is that what it is?
And they have to have at least 10 votes.
Yeah.
So they have to meet both requirements for their names to be declared.
I knew it was a certain percentage, we were just trying to get through the school.
Sorry, that one, um, was the Anderson, or Anderson, dear Greek, sorry, going township.
Oh, yep.
Is the Township Trustee, is that four years?
Yes, Indian Creek. And some counties are actually looking at passing resolutions where they can be appointed instead of elected, because it's so hard to get. Uh, people who are interested and wanting to run.
But here is this.
That makes sense. It does. Oak Township. Apple Township. This one's Rawls Township Trustee.
Those are good people down there.
Rawls Township Clerk, two fill a vacancy. Or sorry, trustee does a vacancy. I wonder why you would say that here. Silver Creek Township Trustees.
I almost stumped you, didn't I?
No, I was, I was making sure I was saying the right thing. St. Mary's Township Trustee. And I didn't even say it correctly. I don't know where to start, though. White Cloud Township Trustee. And then White Cloud Township Clerk, two fill a vacancy.
Five votes. What was one? Was that two?
Uh, one was write-in winner, was two votes. Oh, and who was that? White Cloud had a write-in winner that won with six, um, and outright one. And then White Cloud Township Clerk won with you guys drawing the lot, because it was tied at five. Alright, County Ag Extension Council. Iowa Western Community College Public Measure.
Glad to see those passed.
It was really-
It was very tight.
Like, almost in-
Lewis Central, two fill a vacancy for their board. Lewis Central Public Measure, and that's the first copy. That last one, county? Yep. And then I'm gonna leave this one, this is just the, um, election summary.
We got signed.
Just the first page. I'm gonna rub it, you two, please.
So I know we have a vote, but is that what you shred?
So whenever I come in to get election material shredded, um, abstracts are never shredded, those are kept forever. As well as the election summary, so when I get shredded-
Four years, seven years?
No, forever.
Are you kidding?
Yeah, so the only thing with election stuff that I'm allowed to shred are like, the ballots, like the Declaration of Limited Votes, the Abstract of Votes, and the, um, tally lists that they fill out at the pre-seats have to be kept forever.
So is that what you put in the basement, of yours?
Yep. So if you go into the vault right now, we have a bunch of boxes of all the ballots from the pre-seats. Okay, so this next copy we're doing is for the Election Results Finder. So that, we're gonna sign-
Yay!
The President.
This is a good one.
And we just find that one under there. Yeah, that's for the election file. This is my-
We got, you gotta try it on that one.
Uh, United States Representative District Four. State Senator District Eight. State Representative District Sixteen. Iowa Supreme Court Justice. Court of Appeals Judge. Second- Second Part of Field-
For what?
For the ballgame. We can say the-
Uh, it's in, it's in Lincoln.
Oh, it's in Lincoln, oh, I find it very funny, first one, Judge.
This one's close. It's far as everyone else, but close for me.
Something. Fourth, Fourth Field Judge.
This is the first day they've applied in Lincoln.
No. District Four Judge. Second District Four Judge. District Four Associate Judge. Constitutional Amendment One. Constitutional Amendment Two. County Board of Supervisors. County Attorney. County Sheriff. County Attorney, two fill a vacancy. County Township. Deer Creek Township. One Mid Township. Indian Creek Township. Indian Hill Township.
How many people watch the method?
Lion Township?
About three.
Jill-
Probably three people, really.
Oh, Township, I'm sure it's written. Apple Township. Rawls Township. Rawls Township Trustee, two fill a vacancy. Who is that? Paul Hardy. He was appointed at some time last year.
Did he could-
He's one of the state. Silver Creek Township Trustee. St. Mary's Township Trustee. White Cloud Township Trustee. White Cloud Township Clerk, two fill a vacancy. Swallow Water Conservation District. County Agricultural Cultural Extension Council. Iowa Western Public Measure. Lewis Central Treasure, two fill a vacancy. Lewis Central Public Measure. And the last four, I'm gonna call them. Okay. Abstract of Votes for the Election Manager. It's all signed. Alright, next copy we're doing is about Secretary of State. President. We do talk, we hold up the, the Secretary of State back in the office, or get a new one. United States Representative District Four. And Colorado, under investigation for using the passwords before the election. State Senator, Representative District Eight, for- First Senate, City, State Representative District Sixteen. Supreme Court Justice. For Iowa. Court of Appeals Judge. Court of Appeals Judge Number Two. Court of Appeals Judge Number Three. Court of Appeals Judge Four. District Four Judge. District Four Judge Two. District Four Associate Judge. Constitutional Amendment One. Constitutional Amendment Two. Constitutional Amendment Three. County Auditor. County Sheriff. County Sheriff, two fill a vacancy. County Township Trustee. Deer Creek Township Trustee. Down- Indian Hill Township Trustee. Rockville Township Trustee. Rockville Township Trustee. Rockville Township Trustee. Apple Township Trustee. Rawls Township Trustee. Rawls Township Trustee, two fill a vacancy. Silver Creek Township Trustee. St. Mary's Township Trustee. White Cloud Township Trustee. White Cloud Township Clerk, two fill a vacancy. Swallow Water Conservation District. County Ag Extension. Iowa Community College Public Measure. Lewis Central Director at Large, two fill a vacancy. Lewis Central Public Measure. Election Summary for the Secretary of State's Office. We're more than halfway through. Alright, so the next Abstract of Votes that we're signing are for the specific districts. So Anderson Township Trustee. Deer Creek Township Trustee. I heard it, heard you. White Cloud Township Trustee. Indian Creek Township Trustee. Indian Hill Township Trustee. I had more than-
Right.
Township Trustee. Township Trustee. Apple Township Trustee. Rawls Township Trustee. Rawls Township Trustee, two fill a vacancy. Silver Creek Township Trustee. St. Mary's Township Trustee. White Cloud Township Trustee. White Cloud Township Clerk. Two fill a vacancy. Swallow Water Conservation District-
The ones that-
So, um-
Is that what happened?
White Cloud had a vacancy that they filled with, it's, um, all the ballots, two fill a vacancy. It means that that office was filled before the term was up, and it has to be on the next general election ballot. Um, because if you're appointed with, and then the- Yeah, so if you're appointed, you have to be elected to fill that seat again, to fill out the meter of the term.
Yeah.
For the term. Yes. Lewis Central Public Measure. And that's it with the Abstract of Votes, and after, we're just doing rehearsals like this. Want to get ready?
I'll just scribble them in.
Get writers' cramp anytime now.
I'll just put it between the legs.
Maybe a dodge on Carol, just go-
Talked to Greg after church the other day, Sean Burson, he's excited.
It'll be wonderful, I said.
You will.
Frank Hathers? Happy Town? Is this special paper, Katie? Yes. Is that relevant, cover? The Larry Satch? It is from the Larry Satch.
There should still be plenty of that.
It's there, Rod.
Are you kidding?
Stop, Hillary, again. We have about two boxes of this, though. Frank Hathers. The Anderson? Apple Township. Jeffries? Lawrence and Thomas? Is he definitely- Robert Dashman, he was appointed in 20- Robert Dachshund? He was appointed in '21 and then was elected in '22. I can't remember. That doesn't sound right. I don't remember. But he was appointed at some point. John C. C. Robert Chandler. Dennis Smith. Sharon Martin. Mark Burn.
Clint didn't have to run, did he?
No, he's on it off here. Been two years.
Oh, offering. Is that Shane here?
Michael Rellingbult. Paul K. Schaefer. Laurie Green. Michael Irvin. Chuck BB for White Cloud Township Trustee. Michael BB. Chuck BB for Soil and Water. Ron Seigold. Paul Hathaway.
Mm-hmm.
Jack Anderson. Lisa Tallman. Preston Sargent. Betsy Hary. Yay! Last one.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the general elections?
I make a motion to approve the 2024 general election canvas.
I will second that. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, let's do a roll call.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Congress is absent. Motion carries to zero. Now, this is per Richard Crouch, Board of Supervisors, discuss formal action, Resolution 2439. Does it fill any input on this, Amy?
Yeah, if the legislature needs to want it. So that's what those are. For that, so the first that he's been for yet.
Sure. All right, do we have a motion to approve Resolution 2439, Board of Supervisor Minutes?
I make a motion to approve the Resolution 24-39, the supervisor minutes.
All right, we'll second that motion. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing non, we'll do a roll call again.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Carries to zero. Crouch is partying in the morning. Hopefully he's watching here, though, huh?
Right.
All right. That sounds like that's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at 4:33.
4:33, I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Patrick. She loved us, didn't she?